All right, time is now six thirty-three, Monday, May sixteenth. This is the Select Board meeting, the second one of the month. And we will open, as per usual, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a roll call from the board members. Sal, Dave Hemmely, Select Board Chair.
Marlo Herrick.
Normandy Blake.
And that moves us to announcements. Do we have any?
I do not.
All right. Neither of you have announcements.
We're here.
All right, I don't have specific announcements either, so that moves us on to appointments. First of which is eight seventy-four Battle Street. It would be, I apologize for pronunciation, Knowlton and Moffel.
Moffel.
Come on down.
That's what I was spelt on the board. That's how you put it on the board unless you...
Well, you don't...
I mean, it could have been your handwriting.
Probably was. How are you folks? You doing pretty good here?
Good.
So, we're not actually Emily Knowlton and Andrew Moffel, because they couldn't be here tonight. Emily's my daughter, so I'm Deb Knowlton, and I brought Scott Flood.
Scott Flood, I'm an attorney of Hobbiton.
Okay.
So, as you know, well, nice to meet you. Thanks for coming in. Thank you. Thanks for letting us be here. We are the Butters, well, my daughter and her husband are the Butters at eight ninety-eight Battle Street, to the eight seventy-four property, and kind of keeping an eye on it since they bought the house and...
Can I just ask a question, just to...
No, please.
So, the place we're talking about, right? So, if I'm standing across the fire station looking, am I left or am I right?
You're on the left.
On the left, okay.
Their house is the white house that sits down.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, got it, thank you.
Yep, so, we bought that in two thousand and twenty in January, and it had been broken into, and the copper all stolen, and had issues with vagrants and people breaking in. And, you know, we renovated it, and then she and her husband ended up purchasing it from us, which has been phenomenal, they love living there. And so, what we've been watching is the house next door, the eight ninety-eight seventy-four Battle Street, and we just have been paying attention and noticed at the last Select Board meeting the potential for possibly subdividing, and obviously, that would be something that we would just, I guess, would just like to put on record that we really prefer that that didn't happen. They've had to call the police multiple times for people squatting in the farmhouse, and had been excessive drug use, and a lot of not great things going on. And so, the idea that that might continue, whether it becomes a public property or not, is fairly disconcerting, you know, also because she would really like it to become part of their parcel as well, purchase it, so.
Okay, so, I'll start with a couple key bits of information about what you were mentioning. We did bring it up as things that were possibilities and things that could happen at the last meeting. We decided it didn't make sense for us to just make that decision. So, we're going to have a public hearing, which I believe is scheduled for the second Select Board meeting next month, so about a month from now. So, we can take all of the public input about what to do with that land. Whether, you know, it's conservation, splitting, selling, et cetera, all of it will come up there. And then we'll take that input and make a decision. As far as the comment about wanting to purchase it, at this point in time, we still haven't put it up yet.
Right.
We do hope to do that soon after the public hearing and the decision is made on what manner that would happen in. And that would be a public bid process.
Right.
So, that would be, I don't know that it would be announced a month from now, but it would be probably announced shortly thereafter, once the decision's made on what to do with it.
So, if you bring it to the second Select Board meeting to get public input, are you presenting the public with options and then having a vote?
Basically.
What are the options you're going to present?
So, the things that I mentioned, I want to say last week, but it was actually a couple of weeks ago now, at the last Select Board meeting, things that we mentioned were, the kind of options that we saw in front of us are, there can be a strip of kind of conservation put on it down by the river, and the property sold as is. There, the property, however, can be subdivided, and whether that's the town or whoever purchases it decides to do, then those are options that we have to look at and see what's there as well. And whether that makes sense for the town to do versus sell it and just let someone do it if they want to, because there's nothing to prevent that, because it's a grandfathered property to allow for one more subdivision. There are a couple other things that we are looking at as far as the linked, but not same parcel of property across the street, and the driveway situation with that, and if we can remove that and use it towards the public safety building for the other access that's there, and the access to the new sand shed that would be up behind it. So, there's a few other moving pieces. The other idea that had been floated was to subdivide it and conserve the field, but sell the house, so there's a whole bunch of different options there. And they'll all have different pros and cons, whether it's keeping empty open space, whether it's, there's going to be park access and ability to get down towards the river, or whether it's going to be more money in income for the town. So, there's all different options, and we'll see what the public has to say.
So, I'm assuming you talked to the Municipal Association, and I would encourage you to consult with them about this idea of subdividing it, because I don't think you have the right to do that as a town. You know, we could cite the chapters and, you know, the ERAs and things like that, but, you know, the whole idea of this is I think the town absolutely has a right to keep the parcel if they want to, as an entity, you can keep the whole parcel. And you can sell the whole parcel if you want, and then whatever money is over and above, you know, the money that is owed to the town from taxes and fees and things like that, would go back to the prior owner. And whether you can find that person or not, I'm not sure, and if not, you interplete into the Superior Court, and that becomes their problem, not your problem.
Yeah, we've done that with a bunch of other properties.
Right, exactly. But the statute, and again, I don't represent you guys, so you really should talk to Municipal Association about this, but I don't think the statutes allow you to subdivide the parcel and then, you know, sell off its some pieces, and you certainly cannot make profit, quote-unquote, on that. I mean, whatever you do, everything's got to go back to the prior owner. But the statute doesn't, just doesn't allow you, well, I don't want to say it that harshly, but the statute is silent on the ability to subdivide property that you take. I mean, it clearly allows you to take the parcel in its entirety. It clearly allows you to keep the parcel for specific purposes like you talked about. It allows you to sell the parcel, you know, public sale, sealed bid, that sort of thing. But the statute, and we've gone back and looked, I looked at Supreme Court cases, and I just can't find any authority to allow the town to subdivide property like that, that they take the tax deed. So, I would encourage you to talk to the Municipal Association about it, before you go too much further down this path. I mean, all the other things I think you can do, I just don't think the subdivision is one you can do.
Can you make sure that we ask that?
Absolutely.
Assuming we get the kind of answer that I expect, then ask our legal counsel?
Sure. And I also understand that it has been a history, or there's some cases where, you know, adjoining parcels have been sold to a Butters. And I think Mrs. Knowlton, on behalf of her daughter, would, that would be something they would be interested in. I mean, they're not looking to, you know, get a deal, you know, they're willing to pay fair market value. And, you know, the house, for all practical purposes, is a tear-down, it's a liability. You've got a lot of drug use there, there's probably some needles kicking around, you've got some problems unique to that parcel. And they'd be willing to commit to, you know, demolish the house, that way it wouldn't be a burden on you guys. Anyway, it's just, on behalf of them, if you're willing to do that, if that was something you guys are interested in.
Yeah, with our, so, we have a policy for the way that we sell property.
Sure.
And we do have, in Pillsbury Lake, ones that prioritize a Butters. If it is open property, as opposed to something that's built on, that does not apply to the rest of the town. And the policy otherwise is, unless we have a specific, like, pressing need or reason that it should go up to open bid. So, we would probably be doing that open sealed bid process. I don't think the policy says specifically that we will always take the highest bidder, but it would be a hard, it would be a hard trial to try and not take the highest bidder. But we do have a, I believe, most reasonable clause in there. So, for example, if it was you and somebody else that had the same highest bid, then I think we could provide preference at that point. But we do have a policy, and you can read that on the...
Yeah, I had, we had read it, and I thought it had stated that vacant land could be sold to a Butters, and I didn't know it applied only to Pillsbury Lake, because, I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's vacant land. The house isn't livable, saleable, usable, so I just didn't know if that was a consideration that might be given.
Yeah, the way that it stands right now with a house, it's not considered vacant land, so...
Okay, okay. Well, I do appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And so, the second meeting in June will be discussing this?
And I believe we've got the, later on, we've got a draft of the posting that he's going to show us, so we know how that's going to go up, and probably go up tomorrow.
Okay.
Do either of you have any other comments or questions?
I just want, you own the house that's down by the river?
My daughter.
Oh, your daughter, yeah, right. They own it down, the one that just was built not too long ago.
No, no, so, they own the white ranch that sits down.
Okay.
The new, it's next to the big new house that was just built.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if you know this, but that, the, he came over and spoke to my daughter and her husband, and said that he had to take six inches of topsoil off of the property because there was so much drug use and needles inherent in the dirt, that before he could actually build the house, he had to have that, and then brought to a superfund site, so that it could be...
Broke.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of the concern, you know, they're a young couple, they're newly married, and both sides of their, where they live, has had history of some, some pretty unseemly behavior. And I guess, you know, they'd really like to stay and to live in Webster and make it their home, and that's why they're really looking to see if they could take the, you know, purchase the property next door, but also that, you know, putting a park way down where nobody can see, and, you know, it would be very difficult to police, and I think there's some concern for that. As evidenced by what's already happened and is happening to the house they live in, to the house that's built next door, and then to also the house on the other side. So, it's just something that we wanted to just kind of put out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
We're good. Thank you, good time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks for your input.
All right, that moves us on to the next appointment.
I would like to ask a couple questions on...
Oh, I'm sorry.
On that statement here?
On which statement?
Well, this piece of property, you made a few statements, I'd like to ask some questions on, before you move on to the next.
Okay.
You made a statement that that was grandfathered, that property?
Yes, that is the current belief.
And I don't understand how that is grandfathered, that you can...
If the property...
Separate that seven acres, I don't understand that.
So, if the property in the parcel is over, I think it's five acres, and is old enough, and I don't remember the date, I'm sorry, when the zoning ordinance changed from a minimum lot size of two point five to five acres, if you're old enough to have an acre, a lot that could have been subdivided on the old zoning ordinance, it's grandfathered and you're still allowed to do so.
To do one further subdivision. Okay, and the second question I have, you said you have your town policies of selling land. Now, have you changed that policy? Or is it still the same old policy where you don't have to follow your policy, and you can just do whatever you want?
So, we actually had the meetings, and we did the public stuff to comment on it and talk about it, and said what we were changing. And the short version of what changed is the last clause that I believe you're talking about. We did leave that, but also required that if it's being used, all of the specifics of why and how it's being used must be in the motion and must be in the minutes.
So, you don't have to follow the town policy of selling land, maybe of town land? You don't have to follow that policy? Is what you're saying?
Of course we have to follow the policies.
Well, you, didn't you just say that that clause is still in there?
The clause allows us to do...
Not follow it?
That's not true.
Is that, is that clause still in there, that last clause?
Yes.
Yes.
So, you don't have to follow the policy?
That's not true. We do have to follow the policy, it's an exception. And the exception warrants exceptional changes, not a because we felt like it. So, we do have to follow the policy.
But not if you don't want to?
And we'll actually be signing that new version of the policy later this evening, I believe, since we now finally have the typed up and new formatted version of it to incorporate.
Could I get a copy of that new policy then?
Absolutely, as soon as it's signed, we'll have it up on the website, and you can have a copy of it.
Because that really sounds just as bad to the original one, to me.
But that's not dealing with this property, so...
Well, it is, because it's coming up for sale.
Okay.
Isn't it?
Do you have another specific comment about specifically this property?
Yes, this is pertaining to this piece of sale property coming up for sale.
This is talking about the policies, which is not specific to this property. I believe you are on the agenda later, talking about policies, so we can do that. But do you have other specific question about this specific piece of property?
I can understand how you want to deviate from my question, so we'll move on.
We're on the agenda.
Excuse me. You don't want to answer my question, we'll move on.
I think, I think he answered your question, so...
Trying to, but...
But, yeah, I think we should let these people...
Thank you, folks.
This might be, you people, stay comfortable, have some coffee, I'll get you a glass of wine.
I'd like a donut, please.
This might be a premature request, but since we're talking about properties that are so close together, I'm going to ask you as a personal favor, as a longtime resident of town, do not let the conservation people carve that lot up. Please, let the residents enjoy the property that they buy, and that's...
Well, I think that's, that's exactly why, I think, both of us brought it up, is, is we want to, we, I'm not going to speak for Dee or Dave, but to me, I don't have any hidden agenda, I don't, I don't, I don't, you know, I totally respect what you're saying, I totally respect what everybody's saying, and that's why I brought up that before anything is done, as we learn a little bit even more about, as he pointed out, you know, the Mexican gets the money, the town doesn't, and if there is no Mexican, it can take, like, forever to get it back. So, we are just trying to do our due diligence to do what we, or some ideas that we thought was not a bad thing for the town. I mean, she's pointing out some very concerning, like, to me, concerning matters of, that I'd like to talk to my chief in my police department to say, why would that even be happening? Do you know what I mean? Anywhere you live in this state, somebody can move in next to you and have this awfulness, as we call it, which is really a bad, bad situation for our whole state. And what I, what my, my point to it is, is that, that we just were trying to do something good for the town, not trying to make it adhesive, maybe that's not even the right word, terrible for the neighbor, but I'm hearing you, like, I, and that's why we both said, and Dee, I don't know if Dee was here that night, but...
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, and then, like, we, let's see if we can get some public comment before we make any decision on what to do with the property.
Yeah.
Because it is, it wouldn't be ours, I mean, we sit here for a short time, it's for everybody. So, just, that's, that's what I've learned since sitting here, is the importance to do your full, and, you know, your full due diligence to everyone that's in this town before just saying, oh, here you go, do you know what I mean? So, you know, and we respect what he's saying, but in the, in the, in the same time, we're, we're here, we've been voted in, and we, we want to try to do what's best for the town, and that's why we're having the public meeting.
And I think the only thing Mrs. Knowlton was saying was that, you know, for whatever reason, this particular piece of the town has had a long history of drug use, and vagrancy, and squatters, and things of that nature.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure why that is, but the concern is if you make a park down by the river, where no one's going to be able to see what's going on down there, it's just going to be much worse, most likely.
Yeah, yeah.
You've already got the house, the new house that was down there, they had to strip off the soil, and certainly that farmhouse has been a squatter, people have been living there for a long time.
Yep.
It just seems to us it'd be better if we could somehow, you know, sell it to her daughter or husband, and they can make use of it, they could restore the fields, you know, they could do what people in Webster would like to see, as compared to being a problem.
Well, and you, I would think, you would want young families to want to stay, and grow families, and be here, and become, you know, integral to the town, and that's what they'd really like to be able to do, so.
I think the reason I wanted to kind of save that land, for the, because I've been here a long time, we used to have a nice beach on One Rocket, the town did, and used of it, well, that's gone, so now, you know, and I, and I mean, I have land on the river, so, but I, I see the big picture, where it's nice to have the rest of the town use, be able to use that beautiful river. And I guess that's my big thing, is because I don't want to see it gone, we, we had a great beach, and we, I was not a selectman, they ended up, we could have bought this house behind the beach, and had parking, and, you know, everybody could enjoy it, because that's where the kids had swimming lessons, and all of that fun stuff. And so, I'm, I just, I want to see the river being saved for some people, you know, so, for future generations, so they can enjoy it, not have everything tied up with who owns the property, and that's the end of that. And I, I don't, I'm, I'm not happy with this drug use, I'm not happy at all for any of this stuff, because I'm, this is the way the play people are going, it's kind of crazy.
And even where, where I live, I mean, we're, I'm surprised that they do it so close to everything. I mean, we have, where I live, the perfect place for people to hide out. So, it's just kind of, you know, and that tells me again, and still again, I get where you are coming from, and everybody, but to me, you move it out of there, it's gonna, it's, could go somewhere else. So, we also need to probably find out why it's so out of control, personally, that's the way I feel, that's why we have a police department, and, and...
Well, and the land goes like this and slopes in, and so, you put something down by that river, it's going to be very hard to see what's going on, and that, you know, is going to put a burden on the police, and, you know, let's be honest, you're a small town with a small police force, that's not something necessarily that you, you know, just might just send, take on, you know, but, so, yeah.
And I would expect that we'll be bringing all of this up, and hopefully, everybody will bring up just as much to inform us more, when we have the public hearing. I believe by then we'll also have some other news that may affect that portion of, you know, making it a park or not, so, those sorts of things, we hope to have all of it come out of the public hearing.
Okay.
And so, I'm going to go ahead and let them ask us questions, but I don't want to keep reading, so, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I was just going to have a thought about, you know, where all the drug stuff was, because I think you guys all remember, it was tent city down, down in that area for a while, there were a bunch of tents, a teepee, and everything else, and I don't know who they were, or, or what was going on, but it was a pigsty, and, and they were there for quite a long time. I'm going to guess, because that, the house that's so pretty there right now, I think it was, was right in that area, and it was, I don't doubt that, you know, they had all that problem. But, but the other thing, I, real quick one to bring up, because I know you're going to have a meeting about it, you were talking in some of the old, the minutes, it was stripped down by the river, and I don't know how that would benefit the town, because then the house would no longer have waterfront, and the tax, the price of that property would go without having waterfront. But also, if you made it conservation, which the townspeople can use it, we're leaving a park, we can't park the one from seven, you know, it's, who wants all these people running in and out, you know, behind and in between houses?
So, I'll go ahead and...
I don't see a benefit at all to the town to take that waterfront away from the historic old property, and...
So, I want to try to clarify for you, and then encourage you to bring up all of this and/or other comments at the public hearing. The, when you're talking about a strip by the river, that's, that was never intended to be a subdivision, that was if there wanted to be a strip by the river that was put into conservation. And conservation can go along with and still as a part of a particular piece of property. And so, you know, if I wanted to put X number of acres behind my house into conservation, I could. But this would be if the town wanted to do that ahead of time, which would not prevent them from having access to the river, but it would conserve the strip along the river, and that conveyance of the conservation, you know, you can't go down there and do all of, cut trees and stuff, even if you got a DBS permit, which, good luck at this point. But, you know, that's the kind of thing that that was talking about, it was never subdivided off the river. The subdivision that had been thought about or kind of talked about was the suggestion that if there was a subdivision, and the Conservation Commission might want to have the field conserved, and then the house lot be the, the smaller lot that was then sold off. And it, it sounds like maybe that's not even a possibility, we'll have to look into it, but, but the idea was never to subdivide the river.
Well, because you were just saying that, that would subdivide the property, the conservation would get, the, the house would have a little piece of property, and then the big piece of property in the back would be subdivided off for the, as the town, it's no longer belonging to the Fisher house. That is the property as conservation.
The subdivision would be side to side going down the road, not from the house to the river.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't, the house would still have partial on the river, in my eyes, so you're just... So, there would be just straight down, and there would be this river, and then the house and the river, they have their own river, too.
If there was a subdivision, it would be straight from road to river.
Yeah, okay, I'll bring that up at the meeting, because I, I don't think it's a good idea, I don't think it's...
And we hope that people tell us whether they think it is or isn't, so...
Right, yeah, just having people preach in and out, I don't want to, yeah, okay.
And to be clear, if, for example, I put some of my property into conservation, that does not give everybody in town access to it.
No, I, I understand that, but this would be town-owned conservation property?
No, because we would be with, well, so, there...
Conservation would have to buy it, which is town-owned.
The, if, if the subdivision happened, then you'd have one parcel that's the house and property, and then you'd have another non-house parcel. And that would be, it sounds like the part that would have, because that's where the field is. And so, that would be the part that, if the town were going to hang on to it to conserve or do a park, or any of those sorts of things, that would be that property. The main discussion of the conservation, though, is a conservation easement along the river. That would not be, it would not maintain or retain being owned by the town. That would be sold with property, it would just be a restriction on the property for next to the river.
See, I think that's something we need to talk to the Municipal Association, but it's just, just like you, you can't subdivide, you know, you can't encumber the property either, you can't put an easement on it, you can't put a conservation easement on it, because essentially, you're taking value out of the property, and you're giving that value to the town, whereas that value properly goes through the fair market sale process back to, pays the taxes, and then goes back to the prior owner. You know, and again, I don't represent you guys, so go talk to them, but I don't think you can subdivide, and I don't think you can encumber the property either, I think you, you take the parcel, you have a tax lien on the parcel, you take a tax deed, and then you, you know, either keep it, keep it in entirety, if you want to keep it for the entirety, you can do that, or you can... if you wanna keep it for the entirety, you can do that, um, or you can sell it, and I just don't think there's a, there's a hybrid model there, that you're, that you're trying to go down.
So, anyway, I was trying to clarify what, what the comments.
They do.
And obviously, we're gonna ask legal, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks, folks, appreciate it.
All right, that moves us on to the seasonal camper occupancy permits. Apologize for making you move, these chairs are a little more comfortable.
I know, whatever, the, the chairs.
They're the libraries, so they must've put them away.
We sat here in our, and, and some of those for a long time, we're like, I wanna sit over there.
Those are like the air comfort chairs or something.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I was just requesting a seasonal occupancy for my trailer, um, I've got the lot written down, the lot number, I've put on my sign-in. But, um, I'm kinda running into an issue with that, the other issue that I am running into is, um, address issues. Apparently, I'm, I've been using the post office in Concord to get my mail, and in order to register, it makes it very difficult, they don't wanna send it to the post office. So, um, I'm kinda running into some conundrums, 'cause the neighbor across the way, he caused me problems before with the HOA, and it ended up costing me like thirty thousand dollars in damages, having me move my camper and all of my cars off, and move it back to Idaho, and then back here again, it's just, he has no clue how much money it cost me. And he would use little things with the HOA, and I went through circles and circles, and I don't wanna go that route. I've always dealt with the town and had no problems with the town, they were very clear, but, um, I just wanna, you know, my intentions, I do wanna put something on there at some point, I'm kind of in a conundrum, I've got a workman's compinch, eh, injury, which I have a lawyer dealing with that situation, and they couldn't do the surgery until I was at ground level. So I had to wait till I was in the camper to get the surgery. So, basically, it's gonna be, I'm gonna be out for three months dealing with this, and we'll see how, hopefully, maybe I'll get a settlement, and I'll be able to go through and put a modular in place, and then everything will be all set. But, in the meantime, I need someplace to stay, because there's such an issue in Manchester with housing crisis, and the situation you guys were talking about, the drugs and the craziness, you guys have no idea. I've seen too much of it up close, and it's scary, they're actually putting elderly in shelters with these people that are drug addicts, and the elderly are getting abused, and so, the guy that's staying with me is one of those people that was a victim of what happened, and so, anyway, I, I, it's just I don't wanna go that route, I'd rather stay in my nice little safe camper and not have to deal with that kind of drama and craziness, so. I know I had spoken with, um, the clerk's office in regards to addresses, and I guess the state has something where they want you to send your mail to a shelter. However, they don't understand, number one, forget ever getting a professional job, because they look, know that address, and they automatically assume a person has got issues. Number two, they open your mail, and they throw your mail away or return it to sender, so I've seen that happen to other people. That's why I kept mine at a post office. So, my concern is I want to get my vehicles registered and not have any problems with the police department, because he's getting phone calls from this guy, so I'm guessing he must be from another state, moved up here. 'Cause most people, I'm from Idaho, you don't do that to our neighbors, so, most people keep to themselves.
So, I'll, I'll first touch on a, a quick question about the registration, 'cause you said a lot of this is in order to enable that.
Yeah.
Um, roughly, how much time do you have left that you need before you do the registration?
He, he gave me thirty days from last week, so probably twenty days.
Okay.
To get the registration and stuff done, he said I could have one vehicle unregistered. So I guess I got a question on the camper, 'cause there's really no motor in it. Um, I, I, it took me, it costs so much to have it put there and have it set up, I just, to go and try to register that, I think I'd be better off if I have to pay a little bit extra on my taxes, I'd rather go that route, than trying, 'cause I don't see how they can make you get, you know, registration on that, I'd rather pay through, yeah, I think there's campgrounds that pay a certain amount, and that's fine, I'll be more than happy to pay a little bit on, on that, um, as an occupancy. Um, my concern is I have a U-Haul that my stuff is stored in, that's registered in another state, my truck is also registered in another state. Part of this problem is the fact that I can't get an address there, um, to register with, and they will not, the DMV will not send it there. And I spoke with the DMV this last week in regards to the situation, they asked me to bring this up, so. I don't know if there's anything you guys can do, even if it's a temporary occupancy, I don't know if you can keep it, I don't know if you wanna call it a campground site while I'm building and give me a temporary method, I don't know.
So, we can't call it just like a campground or something like that?
Yeah.
Um, and let me just ask a couple clarifying questions, so I can make it easy. Do you own the property?
I do.
Okay. Um, and the property we're talking about, I believe, is on the left as you're going down to the Pillsbury Lake boat launch?
It, it, it's basically, you know where Mount Vernon Terrace is, where it intersects? Basically, if you're at that intersection of Mount Vernon Terrace, it's up the hill, it's like a weird triangular lot.
Okay.
It's only a quarter of an acre, it's very small, and part of the problem was when this association was, um, they divided it into such small lots, they were almost non-buildable lots. And it's been a problem for the town, it's been very difficult trying to, 'cause I know there's certain parameters to try to get everything in place, and I know it's very tight, and, anyway, it's, honestly, it's a nightmare, it's probably why the HOA just finally dissolved, 'cause they replaced, there was some issues, but.
What is the HOA?
Uh, so, there's Pillsbury Lake Village District, which is the, the water system and the commissioners.
Yep.
There was also Pillsbury Lake Management, and they were in the HOA and the company that did all of the subdivision land for just an initial construction and layout. PLM, Pillsbury Lake Management, uh, said they dissolved and ceased doing business. Some of the stuff that they were doing has, at least in the past, been taken over by PLBD, which is the, the village district. There's been questions about whether there's more that needs to be taken over, or whether they're not allowed to, so, that, but, that's, that's their village district, HOA and village district separation.
So, are you not, and see, I don't know, so are you not allowed to have a, you, you, I, I think I believe that you're supposed to have it registered wherever, does it matter if it's registered in New Hampshire?
Not sure it's a deal, I think.
'Cause I thought that you can, especially with RVs and campers, you can.
Yeah.
Register them.
Register that as a.
Yeah.
And that's pretty common.
Places. But, but that's usually why, so that's why I was a little surprised that she has to have it.
Yeah, well, if it's something like a, a camper, uh, since you brought up the campground, the, the typical rules in a campground is, if it's registered on the current year, then it is not taxable with property tax. Whereas if it is not currently registered and it'll just be driven or towed off, then it is considered property on the lot, and that increases the property value for property tax, so. But I don't know personally whether that would apply here or not on a private lot. I know that in town, private lots are allowed to keep things like the camper and so on on their lot, uh, without an issue. And I know we have, uh, had, both with campers and with mobile homes, seasonal and temporary occupancies in town while people were building or rebuilding, uh, houses on their lot.
Right.
My only problem is I don't know what the PLM, PLBD stuff applies, 'cause I know they had additions onto the zoning stuff plus the HOA. And I don't know how that's supposed to work at this point.
They got a lot of initials over there.
When I bought the property, I was told that I could camp on the lot while I was building, and that's what I was told, that's one of the reasons why I purchased the property, 'cause I'm like, okay, well, I can stay here while I'm building, and that's why I did it. It's just, I think what had happened is just too many people having out rules there, and I even, I had a house basically on order, they wanted to deliver, I was in Idaho, I couldn't even have, had to basically cancel the entire order. And it has just been, the whole thing has just been really not a very positive thing, and I'd rather at least try to get through this so I can actually get a home in place, because it has been a nightmare, and it's like, I'm sure these people have no clue, the nightmare they have caused me, and all of the situations of them, you know, doing what they did, and I'm just, I've bit my tongue on it, and I'm just like, I know this guy is kinda pushing the envelope, he even came across the street screaming at me at night when I had my shed delivered, and I've honestly, I've considered getting, um, something in place for protection, because he, I hear him screaming at his dog at night, and I'm just like, I don't, it, you know, it is what it is, I do have to stay there, and hopefully he'll get over this, and, you know, it's just, I gotta get something in place, and I can't, I have nowhere else to go, and I'm not gonna go back to where, you know, it's dangerous, so.
So do you have, you have no water, no septic, do you have a building permit or anything to go with that property, or?
I do have, um, I know in the past I paid for a design to have the wellness septic, so I know where they're supposed to go. Um, I've actually talked to the power company, and was gonna have them come out, and I also talked about getting, um, right now, I'd bring in my own water, and as far as septic system, I have a campsite, like five gallon bucket type of thing that's for camping. Um, we do wanna get like a porta potty put in place, but, you know, we've checked with the health, or, I know you said you checked with the health department and didn't see an issue with that, so.
And what'd you say, there's no issue with that? What's in the problem?
No problem.
Yeah, so, in the meantime, I've got a gym membership if I need to go, you know.
But are you living there now?
I am on the site now, 'cause I called before I had the camper moved, I didn't think it was going to be an issue when I had the camper moved, and, anyway. So I'm guessing the neighbor got upset once he saw the camper was there and started raising a murkus, so.
So what's the law about that, having a camper on there? I know, it used to be you could only camp on a property for so many months.
Says that you're allowed to stay there for fifteen consecutive days in a year, you can get a seasonal occupancy for, say, camping for the summer for ninety days, at a maximum, but that's out of discretion of the select board.
So you don't have a seasonal.
That's what I'm here for.
That's what you're here, that's what you want?
Yeah, 'cause I thought I could just go and get one once the camper was set up, and then when I talked to him, he's like, I'll get you on the list to speak to this stuff, and so.
So would it be a seasonal camping permit, or would it be a seasonal occupancy permit?
Well.
'Cause occupancy applies.
It's listed as a seasonal temporary occupancy thing in the zoning ordinance, but it's meant for people who are camping, but it's also meant for the same situation that other people have been, where, say, they're building and they wanna live on the lot in their camper while their house is being constructed, but usually in the past, we wait till somebody has a building permit before we grant them, and they're in the process of construction before we do that.
And how long is it for, the seasonal occupancy?
The seasonal, it's listed in the zoning ordinance as ninety days, is the typical duration for that permit. Though it does give the select board room to extend it if there's a situation warrants it.
So what will you, let's, let's just say we issued this, then what happens?
Basically, my plan is to stay there, and hopefully, the lawyer will do her magic, whatever, and then I can kinda move forward if they get some kind of money, and I can go ahead and get the house put in place, so.
So, let's say, let's, I'm just, gee, doubles out, I can't, let's say, we all say, hey, we'll give you a hundred and twenty days, but, but are you gonna run out of time that you're gonna, that, 'cause you won't have everything in place, it's, I know how fast a hundred and twenty days goes by.
I know, I understand, my thing is, I was thinking a modular, because it's already rebuilt, it always kinda, kinda depend on what they're saying, but a lot of it is financing as well, so, I mean, I understand this is just temporary, and, you know, right now, I am trying to advocate for the gentleman that's staying with me to find some time to subsidize housing for the elderly, because he would qualify. And so I'm trying, but, you know, I, I, I've gotta try to help myself too, I can't, it's just kind of, you know, it's hard. And I've, I've thought about doing home care myself, I've got a lady that would like me to come and take care of her as a live-in, so I mean, I've got other options, but for now, I, I wanna get my house in place if I can, so.
So, I just wanna make sure that we're clear upfront, that even whether, whether we are granting the seasonal occupancy or not, that and being able to build a house, getting a building permit through whatever regulations are down at PLM, PLBD, in order to do that are two completely distinct and separate things.
Yeah.
So, we're not gonna let the seasonal occupancy to allow her to stay in the camper, um, what's your thought on that?
Well, I, I just don't have, how hard housing is, I just, I don't wanna, I just don't wanna see it.
Silly, yeah.
I just don't wanna see her get to a point, and then we have to say, okay, that's not okay anymore, 'cause we, you know, we gave you to that, to that amount of time. I mean, I don't know.
So, do, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, but if, if that ninety days comes to an end, she could come back for, requesting an extension.
Correct.
Um, and the, the second thing would be that, um, if it's a temporary occupancy, as we've done for some other people who are currently building, then.
Or re, or refurbishing, or something like that.
If she came in the next time with, well, I've, I've put the building permit to the planning board, and this stuff has been approved, I just need to stay here until it's done, um, that's also a different, like, that's.
Extension type thing, yeah.
Easy answer sort of thing in the future. Whereas, if it's a ninety day and there isn't gonna be any building, nothing, nothing's been researched and set out and, and, and tried to have happen, that, that's a bit different thing, because then you're, um, basically setting somebody up to be in a camper that's probably not fully winter ready with.
Well, that's why it's just kinda accounting the amount that we have, yeah.
Yeah.
So what is your plan, that you really, like, you have a definite timetable, or are you just, I know you're, you have a booboing and stuff, so with that, what you're waiting for money for that, who could be six years from now, a lot of things as well, so. Just, just running on, um.
No, I mean, I've thought of worst-case scenarios, I mean, the only other option I would have is to go back home, which, I've thought about house-sitting for my brother, but, honestly, it's.
You mean Idaho is.
Yeah, but the problem with that is my kids are here, and honestly, this is where I wanna be, is close to my kids, and.
Now, they live at Pillsbury Lake, or they're married, or they're older, or?
My, I have an older son, um, he's more in the Emherst area, and my daughter's still in school in Merrimack, and my other son is in the Coast Guard.
Merrimack, the L, or not, or Merrimack?
Merrimack, the city, the town, yeah.
So, so it's up to our discretion to even, the ninety days is in the audit ordinance, but we can say, I, ninety days is not very long.
Oh, you're right.
I just feel like, I feel like, uh, personally, you know.
So it'd be August, and then, since you said one-twenty, that'd be September.
Yeah.
And so do you have people, like, do you have a, um, somebody to do your septic, or do you have somebody to do the well, or you like that far along?
Um, there was someone I had talked to about doing the well, in fact, so I had actually put a deposit on it. Um, the problem is everything's getting inflated, so I really, honestly, I need to have the funds in order to do it, so, and that, and I need to be back at work, and that's the big thing, is I have to be back at work, and so, I've gotta fix that battle, and I really don't know how it's gonna turn out, I don't, and yes, it is a gamble, but at the same time, every town is dealing with this whole crisis, and I'm telling you, I even had money set aside so I could have the surgery done, but because I was out of work, I didn't qualify, and they jumped the rent from nine hundred and fifty a month to sixteen. So, I mean, so, and that's, you know, and me having a roommate, who, I'm sorry, no one can afford that. We're getting people from Massachusetts and New York coming up this way, and they're changing everything, and I don't think people realize how drastic it is in some of these areas.
So, a, a suggestion to help you, let's assume that, you know, you get this, a suggestion to help. A suggestion to help you with the livability of the, the property, whether it has an RV in the new leave or not. You mentioned getting electric hooked up. The second thing is wells are of course expensive. But there is actually, the Pillsbury Lake has a, a water supply going down the street.
I did call them. I did call them.
So.
This, uh, according to the lady, it's almost the same price. It's ten thousand dollars to hook up and it's about ten thousand, actually less for a well.
Well, that depends on how far the well goes down.
True.
So that makes a big difference. My well is a dug well and it only goes down twelve, fifteen feet. And yet, up the street, three hundred, they can go up three hundred feet, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, the only, I just worry about a precedent, you know, letting you do that without showing that you're really serious about it.
Oh.
And then I don't, you know, and then, so that leaves it all open door for.
No, I had blueprints, I had, I did the, you know, the test pits, I did everything. I jumped through, I even paid some guy to come cut the trees down. I spent money to put the driveway in. I mean, I really was actively trying to do it and.
So you've gone through the driveway permit process with the planning board?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, and I even have, like I said, I have the old blueprints that I had, but they were nitpicking as to what color the paint was gonna be.
Who was nitpicking?
The HOA.
Pardon?
The homeowners association.
Oh, Pillsbury.
Which was only one person for the last six years.
Yeah, I was gonna say. I mean, to me, that does, I don't, I mean, it's really hard for me to believe somebody, you know, is gonna be that nitpicky on what colors or.
Yeah, I heard, I heard it's not.
What style or.
Yeah, so.
Get the right person in the right spot, it can happen.
My, uh, my concern goes along with Dee's in that, especially if you're, like, electric's one thing, not, not a huge deal. Because, okay, there's a meter at the, the road or the pole. But with putting in well and then the expectation of septic later on, which kinda need to happen too, those imply that a building permit of some sort has been approved.
That already has been.
Oh.
Yeah, there is one for a well and a septic on the lot. I paid for all that prior to buying the lot.
But, but do you have the permitting done for it all?
I did. I, I don't know if it's active still. It probably needs to be.
The well and the septic plan that we have on file is still active. And she does not have building permit with the town.
Okay.
So I haven't seen plans. Maybe there was in the past, but those are not filed. So I don't have them.
I think they were only good for like, I think, two years and you have to renew.
Two or three years.
Yeah, I would have to renew them, but until I know for sure this is, I can get all this stuff done. My other concern was like where they wanted to do the well was at the bottom of the hill. And so I kinda wanted to talk to see about maybe switching, and that'll be something I can discuss with you in the design plan. I just think it's better to have a septic at the bottom of the hill versus, you know, potentially cross contaminating drinking water.
Well, that a lot of times that has to do with topo and what soils you're working with.
And also how close to the neighbors' wells and septics.
And it has to be seventy-five feet away from the well. I know that.
I believe it has to be that far away.
Yeah, it does.
Normally it has to be that far away from the road too.
So a lot of times on that small lot, you can put both on there.
Pillsbury Lake.
Yeah, well, they did it way down at the end and that's, it was kinda like way down in the woods is where he was recommending the well, but it was at the bottom of the hill and I'm like, I'd rather have it at the top of the hill versus the bottom of the hill cuz you don't know what's gonna be running downhill. But, anyway.
I, I just wish it was more like permanent, you know, you're saying you're doing all this. I just wish you, you were per, okay, I'm gonna start doing this now.
Oh, if I had the loan and all of that stuff and everything guaranteed, I wouldn't have a problem doing that. And I had all of that before, but I just couldn't get everything approved and it was a nightmare.
So can we, I don't know, can you, can you bring something like next month with any of that approval?
Yeah, I can bring all that stuff in next month where I was at. I got the old blueprints where I was at. I can call the old manufacturer and see what, you know, cuz I had to cancel the order. They had it basically built and wanted to deliver it and I'm in Idaho. I was trying to see if my dad would, could take it on his lot, you know, he had property there. He's like, no, I don't want anything on there and.
Well, I know Idaho's probably a whole different story with the zoning and stuff. I, I mean, I couldn't tell you how.
Well, the thing is, it was manufactured around here and to have it transported from here to there, just, it just, I just canceled it.
So, let me float an idea and let, let's see where this goes. My concern would be doing this if, uh, for example, going with the electric and the, the well and so on. That's obviously the intent. My concern would be doing that if there is something in Pillsbury Lake's ordinances, et cetera, or policies that don't allow a building to happen later. And I don't want that to happen with her, like, staying there the whole time. My thinking, since she mentioned that she had about thirty days, is that we have a letter written up to PLVD asking what, if anything, would prevent a house being built there or if it would be considered buildable? And if there are any other processes that need to be done at this point beyond bringing a building permit to our planning board in order to do that. And then request that that response be by our next meeting. Cuz that's more than two weeks out at this point. That's, uh, three weeks out. So if we request that the, the response be by that time, then they can tell us and as long as there's no prevention of that, then I would suggest that we grant that seasonable, uh, seasonal occupancy permit. Because at that point, it makes sense with what she's trying to do. What I don't want to get into a problem with is the seasonal, seasonal camping, getting an address and everything else now being a residence when there is no home to be a residence. And there can't be. As long as it can become a residence, I don't see a problem with it. But if it can't be, that would be an issue that we would have to discuss.
Yeah, cuz we don't wanna pres, make a precedent of that type of thing. I agree, I agree.
So, um, I don't want to delay everything on you, but I think, for me, that's the process that I think makes sense cuz then we're, we can't step on Pillsbury Lake's toes if we've asked them. And.
And she's got thirty days until she's re-asked to remove it.
I, I think she said about twenty-something now.
Well, it, it's more with the vehicle registrations with the police department and that's what he was referring to. Uh, basically getting my vehicles registered here in New Hampshire. And I know in the past I had attempted and I tried to get an address on the lot and I was told not until your house is completely built and you have an occupancy permit. And that was the procedure then. I don't know if anything has changed since then.
I believe that's still the procedure.
You have to have a completed driveway. So you'd have to get the driveway and, and what we have on record says you add a temporary access, not a driveway.
Oh, is that what it is, a temporary access?
You would have to apply for a driveway permit.
Okay.
And then it would have to be fully built before we would either put it in an address for the lot.
Okay.
Or you would have to finish putting a building permit.
Okay.
And Russ would certainly help you.
I can work on the driveway cuz the driveway's, I mean, I drive on Alba, it's pretty level. Are you thinking like a actual paved driveway?
Well, now, there has to be a paved apron.
What's it, like a?
There are paved apron, so there would have to be the paved apron for the driveway.
An apron, okay.
To go onto the road, to connect to the road.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But you need the driveway permit.
Okay. I will work on that. That would help if I can actually get an address there and that would resolve a bunch of the other issues I'm dealing with, so.
Yeah, and, and anything, I know that there are several other empty lots in Pillsbury Lake. It's hard to imagine based on how tight they're built.
Right.
But there are, and so this would also help with that future process. If someone comes to the planning board, they'll know whether.
They don't go to the planning board, they go to.
Well, if they go for a building permit, for example.
The planning board doesn't do building permits.
Oh, that's right. They do, they do site reviews and the driveway.
The select board may appoint a Tom to do that.
Also, the other issue is the adjacent property next to me. Um, I brought this up to him briefly. I believe it's owned by the town. I'm not exactly sure.
You're right.
Anyway, I've been kinda told different things. When I bought the lot, the realtor had told me you own on the other side of the tree back to the corner. And then when I had it appraised, basically that guy's like, no, it's two feet on the other side of the tree back, which is more level at the top of the hill. Then I got it appraised by somebody else who also, cuz I'm like, I've got two conflicting stories. So then I got it appraised by somebody else who was the original person who did the whole layout in that area and he said someone had moved some of the spikes. And that he went through and pulled all things and pulled it up and he moved it over probably another ten to twelve feet over. And so it's a lot less than what I thought of the flattened area at the top. So I don't know if the town wants to kinda reassure me is the, is the line correct? Because I've already paid out twice for surveyors to de, define what exactly is the town line. The other option is someone had mentioned that maybe since it's such a tiny lot, maybe the town would be willing to, you know, allow me to purchase it at some point, you know, which would make it easier for building. So that's also, I'll put it before you guys. You know, if it helps expand that area to where it's easier for me to build, I can look into it if I'm able to get the extra money that's I'm expecting.
So, so regarding lots in Pillsbury Lake, I'm gonna go under, I don't know that this is true, but I'm gonna go under the assumption that it's town-owned because you mentioned that.
Yes.
The, okay. If the town puts it up, uh, being it's in Pillsbury Lake, our policy says that we announce it to all of the abutters and it's a bidding process among the abutters.
Okay.
If none of the abutters want it, then we, then we would put it up for a normal bid.
Okay.
If, if we have decided that we're going to sell it off and not maintain it. There, in that area, and I don't know if it's that property or not, there is some town-owned property within Pillsbury Lake that we can't ever sell. And it is in the deeds that it is for us for the purposes of things like dry fire hydrants and being able to access plots for emergency services. And if the town ever decides that it no longer needs that, the property reverts back to Pillsbury Lake's ownership instead of ours. If it's one of those lots, there would be nothing we could do.
Yeah.
So those are the, the two kind of ways that that could in the future happen.
Okay.
Regarding lot lines, the way that the town goes about it is as long as there's an accurate marker that's been put in by a survey, a registered surveyor.
Yeah.
That's what we use.
Okay.
And so wherever that marker currently is, is, is what I would s- suggest you go by.
Yeah, and that's what the second surveyor did. He was the original surveyor, but he had mentioned somebody had moved it, so I was like, so I don't know if up the road things have changed, but he's like, this is based on this, I don't know. I'm just going off of what he had said. And I just know what I was sold was slightly different than, but it's still the same, still core maker. It's just more on a hill versus at the top where it's more level. So, anyway.
So, what do you think of the, the plan of asking Pillsbury Lake and then going forward from there?
I mean, I kinda get what Dee's saying with the presidents, but then I look at it as, you know, time just goes by so fast.
That's why I wanna say that they would have to respond by the next meeting.
Right, right.
Cuz then at the next meeting, we could tell her one way or another.
Right.
And then she would have some ideas too, I think, of who she can get for a while.
Do you think that would work at least we?
Yeah, I would have more of an idea. I mean, obviously I've got an electrician coming this Thursday. So I'm kinda hoping at least like power would be a godsend at this point.
And that would be good. That would be, you know, like, well, you're really serious about doing something.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Be a squatter or whatever.
No, I, I've got the electrician.
And I would not call it a squatter to begin with. I mean, she owns the land, she has, she owns the camper. You know, there's, you know, if we were to look around, there's other things happening and I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this cuz I, I, I feel like I'd, I'd like to say, to give, give her her ninety days to, to figure things out and, you know, in the meantime, we could request, um.
So I, yeah, so I would like to do that. I just don't, I, I wanna make sure that we don't step on something in Pillsbury Lake that we.
Yeah, and I can try to find that original paperwork from Pillsbury Lake when I bought it specifying that I can't have a camper on there while I'm trying to build, which obviously if I'm cutting trees down, I'm bringing in dirt, I've done all this stuff trying to build. I don't see why they would decline it, other than, I, I know in the past they wanted me to move it off because they hadn't approved my design, but they were nitpicking everything. It was like they were.
Who was in charge of that stuff now?
That's the question because it would have been the HOA, which no longer exists.
Which is kind of dissolved, yeah. That's what freaks me out, but.
Yeah.
So then it probably went to the town.
If anything is still Pillsbury Lake specific, it would be Pillsbury Lake Village District that would have that authority. I don't know that there is or that they even can, but I feel we should cover ourselves and ask them before saying, yeah, go, go do what you want on, on Pillsbury Lakeland.
So.
Okay.
All right, sounds like a plan to me. So she's coming back with her more, more details.
I'll come back. Um, when is that meeting that you're gonna be?
June seventh.
June seventh, okay. I'll make it a point to come back June seventh. Oh, June sixth.
Sixth. It's, it's the first Monday of the month.
Okay.
How is it?
Oh, beat you.
I was gonna be at the seventh, so.
Good luck.
Go quick, wouldn't it?
My, my recommendation is make sure that you get a driveway permit into the planning board.
Okay.
Cuz whether you're constantly accessing it with multiple vehicles for a camper or building on it in the future, you should have the driveway.
Okay, and that will actually fix my problem with the address, which will fix my other thing, so I will definitely.
It'll give you the right address.
The address, you might wanna do it quickly cuz addresses can take a month or maybe more.
Okay.
Cuz the state assigns them.
I see. All right, do I need to come see you then?
To drop it off in my office.
All right, um, when are you open next?
Uh, Wednesday.
Wednesday, all right, I'll see you Wednesday. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, could I just mention something? I don't know how you can get your registrations without a street address.
That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, no.
It's been a nightmare.
And once you get a street address, if you're gonna keep the PO box, just use both addresses on your mail.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, to avoid whatever you're trying to avoid. Cuz I work for the post office, so I just wanted, wanted to let you know. And just put the PO box down towards the bottom.
Okay.
And the street address, they read from the bottom up.
Bottom up, okay. Awesome. Thank you so much.
We could give you some well people if you need them.
Oh, thank you. I talked to the guy across the street, that lady, her dad does wells.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
All right, so next up is our last appointment, which is hearing policies, so come on down.
Those garden utensils, come on.
And speaking of policies, while you're on your way up here, I will mention the agenda topics policy. Where anything that you're referring to or plan to refer to, we should have had ahead of time, but we have not. So in the future, make sure that we have that or there may not be an appointment set.
I gotcha.
Yeah, I just wanted to check in and see, um, what was happening with, uh, I put in ninety-one A and asked about some different, you know, what policies have been reviewed and revised if necessary, et cetera. And so, you know, I, I noticed that the, um, the one for selling of town property, but it's on the agenda tonight, so that's kind of a moot question right now. But I, I just wanted to know, um, what was happening with the policies. But I, I just wanted to know, um, what was happening with the policies. Like I said, I didn't real, I didn't know that the old business was gonna be on here tonight.
Sure.
So, um...
Um, so, so let me help out to, to start with and then maybe it'll answer some of your questions, maybe it'll give you some more.
Okay.
Um, we've gone through basically all of the policies that are posted on the website. Um, we were under the incorrect assumption when we started the, the process that those were all of the policies. There are many more, um, so we've gone through some of those. Uh, and we have some more to go as well, according to Dana. Um, I don't happen to have a list in front of me, but there's, there's a few more to look at. Uh, there are one or two such as the, uh, in, I don't remember exactly what we call it, but the personnel policy, the employment policy. Um, that has a committee that's working on it right now to give us a recommendation on what we should do going forward. Um, and Dana can give you more information on that as he's part of it and when they meet. Um, I don't know when they're gonna give us that recommendation. Uh, all of the policies that we've gone through, we have either said we are reaffirming or said what the changes we wanted are going to be. Most, I believe all of the reaffirmed ones, we've had reformatted and then re-signed. Uh, but again, Dana can comment on that. Uh, the ones that we were doing minor changes to, um, for example, the one you mentioned, the, the selling of land policy. Um, we did mention and had in our minutes and had approved how we were changing the policy. Uh, and we had been waiting for it to be formatted and written up because a lot of them were not in standard formats, they were just like a scan of something. Um, and so that's been happening, uh, slowly through the office and as they get finished, they come to us and we sign them. So that's why, for example, the, the selling policy is the old one that you see on the website.
Right.
And we have the new one to sign, even though the new one is what we had already approved that we were gonna do. Um, so hopefully that helps answer some questions on where in the process we are.
Quick question. I, and I'm, I'm not complaining or I'm not making any statements about the personnel policy, but you said there's a committee. How, how do you pick a committee for, is it just, are you folks here that you're on the personnel policy committee?
Actually, none of us are. Um, so we appointed Dana to head that.
Okay.
Uh, gave some suggestions of people both in the community and within the employee of the town uh, to be able to provide input from different sides. Um, I believe he reached out to all of the suggestions. I don't know if he reached out to additional ones. I know that, uh, at least one or two of the people declined to be on it that, uh, had been suggested.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but any further comment on makeup, I would leave to Dana.
Yeah, that's kind of what, what happened. I wish I'd thought of you, though.
I, I believe you mentioned it at a meeting too, and to get in touch with Dana if people were interested.
I, I'm doing homework all the time.
But yes, that, so that's how that happened.
Okay, now, here's another question. Well, is the personnel policy completed?
There is an existing personnel policy that's been in place for several years.
Okay, yes, I'm familiar with that one, but I didn't know if the new one was completed.
It's not completed yet.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious because...
Hopefully we're getting on the, the home stretch.
Okay, cause I, I know that there was some input at some meetings years ago regarding some of the things that were in there, specifically, you know, um, they hadn't done any, um, any appraisals of employees working. And, you know, we asked about that because they were getting huge raises every single year. And they had never checked to see, you know, the selectmen had never sat down with the employees, said, how's it going, you know, can you do this? Have you done this? If not, how come you didn't do this? Do you know what I'm saying? Okay. Um, and so finally when Mike Borak got in there, he said, well, no, we have never done one, but we're gonna do them now. So it was years and years that, it just didn't happen. And I know that it's, it's happening now. Cause when Mike was in, you know, that's when they started.
Yeah, so there was a, the, the current personnel policy, um, was refreshed and new, I wanna say two, maybe three years before I got elected onto the board. Um, and I believe that was, uh, mostly Borak and Shadler that wrote it, wrote up that new
Right.
policy along with our previous administrator.
Okay, yeah, cause Mike...
That is the one that we currently have.
Okay.
And is on the website.
Okay. That's what I was gonna ask.
And it does address, uh, having a review before a raise.
That's the word I was...
That is.
Right, the review.
I know. Appraisal, I like appraisal. I knew what you were saying, but I'm like, what, that's not the right word.
I'm appraising you right now.
That's right.
Um, so back to the selling of properties policy, the, the last line, like, like John was asking about, you, you basically kept the same, but then you said with certain circumstances, it was gonna be different, so...
So, so I'll, I'll try to help explain because we have a current property that this is perfect for.
Right.
The last section there, which is basically as circumstances may allow and, and as seen fit by the, the select board, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the language.
Yeah, as circumstances warrant.
I think it's actually in our packet. Perfect, thank you. So if the board determines that it isn't, this is the, the previous policy.
No, this is the updated.
Oh, this is the updated, oh, perfect.
I have the old one.
So if the board determines that it is in the best interest of the town to waiver from the requirements of this policy, they must discuss and take a roll call vote in a select board meeting with the reasons clearly stated and recorded in minutes. Is the, the way that the new one, uh, is to read that we're gonna be signing.
Okay.
Um, and the Battle Street property, uh, is a perfect example of this. If we had just removed that, um, as a few people suggested that we should do. Um, one of the things that's going on right now is, that's actually kind of two properties. So there's the house lot on the field.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's also across the street, there's the, the little, the tiny garage lot. That tiny garage lot also has a driveway, uh, on a state road.
Right.
And the, I won't go into too many details, but the short version is the state says you can only have within X number of feet, X number of driveways. And part of the problem of getting the second entrance to have an in and an out for all of the emergency apparatus at the public safety building, then we, we can't get that second driveway permit because there's too many driveways too close. The state hasn't given it to us. By using that particular tiny garage lot, um, and being able to do things with that property, we can, for example, uh, say that if the state will, will tell us that if we remove that driveway, they'll give us the driveway permit for the safety building. We can do things like that under a policy of this manner. Um, but if we didn't have that clause in there, we wouldn't be able to, we would just have to sell it. Or hang on to it and not do anything.
Right, cause it's like, I think it's like point two, three acres.
Yeah, and it's surrounded by the, uh, another person's property, so it's not like it abuts ours and we can use the existing driveway.
Right, so it would probably be of a, of a, more of a benefit just to keep it and just get rid of the driveway.
So we, we have some other option, op- options that we're talking about, but the primary reason and purpose of bringing all this up is that to be able to consider things like that and using the driveway, that clause has to be there.
Right.
And it also will create a second entrance to the safety building, which wouldn't be a bad thing. As people have talked about, if one of the entrances was blocked for whatever reason, let's say it was a bad accident.
Which has happened in the past.
You know, there's no other entrance, so, which, so it made a, makes a lot of sense.
Now is the salt shed still going up there?
That is the current plan, yes.
Okay, so wouldn't you need a second driveway for those trucks to, you know, you go in one and out the other?
No, well, yes, but no, it's ideal. Um, and the ideal manner is basically a U shape for the public safety building and then some form of access that continues up to the back. There's a roughed in access now, um, that may not be the most ideal access. We can, we can go with that with some other adjustments if need be. Uh, but the better option would be the second driveway allowance on the opposite side of the safety building. So then you get the in and out.
On this side?
Yeah, so you get the in and out of all of the, uh, emergency equipment.
Right.
You can't end up with like one blocked because something fell down or whatever, uh, or crashed in front of it, as happened before, um, to prevent people from getting emergency services elsewhere in town. Uh, and that would also allow for, uh, a different, uh, more gradually sloped, uh, access to the salt shed, that sand shed land.
Cause we, I mean, everybody was wondering how you're gonna get all these trucks up and down to the salt shed. Um, you know, and, and then have to go in front of the fire engines and between the cars in front. I mean, it doesn't, that's, doesn't make any sense at all.
That's like, that's makes a lot more sense, so...
Oh, gosh, yeah.
So, so in short, that's, that's why the clause exists, that's why we've been encouraged to keep it there. Uh, but also why in the manner of transparency that we try to do, why we said that the re- when that's used, the reasons have to be specific and recorded.
Right, and people will have public input anyway.
Right, and that, and also why it has to happen at a public select board meeting.
Right, okay, okay. Uh, so last thing I was gonna ask. Oh, is the, the people that we bought the property from behind the, uh, for the salt shed, are those the people that are selling their house right now?
Yes.
Is that gonna affect us getting more property or, cause I had heard that we needed more property for the driveway?
Well, the other reason we're looking into switching it.
Oh, okay.
Solves that problem too.
If we can do it up the other side, we don't need anything.
Yeah, and it's actually not, it's more gradual, it's not as, it's more steep.
Yeah, because it's pretty steep right now, the ski slope.
So there's a lot, there's a lot of good that came out of that.
Okay, I just wanted to know about that. The rest of everything, I can come to the next meeting and just... But, but I, um, yeah, I just wanted to know what was happening with some of these policies. And, um, you let me know, and I'll get a copy of your new selling of town policies.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I know I'm, I haven't seen the new policy for the agenda yet, so I'm gonna, I'm kinda...
I thought that was posted a while ago.
It should be on the website.
But I haven't seen it. I didn't know it was new. Um, the, I went to look for the, um, agendas and minutes for the conservation committee and the al- the only thing I found was March ninth. There's nothing online.
Can we have, can we put in a formal request to them saying the public has asked for them?
Sure.
The public is absolutely allowed them, whether they've been approved or not?
Sure.
Because if, if they're talking about, you know, subdividing that, that property over there and, you know, conservation is involved in that, you need to let people know, I mean...
So con- conservation would provide input to the town, cause conservation doesn't own it, so it's not their decision.
Well...
But that would be at the public hearing that they would provide that?
Because one of the minutes of, of the meeting, I think it was, it was a meeting for Close Pin Bridge and then afterwards, uh, in the minutes, it said that the conservation committee talked about, you know, saving the waterfront, and then there was another thing too, but they were talking about saving the waterfront and putting it in conservation. And that was in the selectman minutes, but there was, there's nothing anywhere about conservation. So how did, you had received a letter from them or something and how do...
I, I believe it was that we had a couple members of the conservation commission there that wanted to talk to us about something else, so we asked them their thoughts.
Oh, okay, cause I mean, we were there, we didn't, I didn't see anybody at, at meeting.
So, but, uh, there was one like that and then there was a, a non-public with the conservation commission following.
Right, and, and I got the...
Which was for something else.
I got the information on that, yeah, so, um, so now the town has to approve the conservation committee expending money, correct?
No.
No?
Conservation commission has their own fund, and they can use it for conservation purposes. Whether that's, uh, purchasing easements, helping people file for conservation, uh, or purchasing land to conserve.
Okay, so the...
They can use their fund for all of that.
Okay, so the purchasing of land to conserve, it, obviously it should benefit the town, right?
One, the, I'm trying to carefully say this here.
Right, cause it's town money.
My belief is that the conservation commission's view is that any land that they would purchase to conserve would be in the best interest of the town because that's part of what the conservation commission has been given authority to do by the town.
Right.
I can't really speak for them any further than that.
Okay, now, isn't there a law that they need to, to give you their minutes?
It's ninety-one A, but...
If there is, they have to provide the minutes, but if they don't have their minutes, they need to provide them in a certain amount of time. And I think it's five days, but I'd have to look.
Right, cause I mean, there's, like I said, there's nothing, nothing before March nine.
It's that they have to have them to be able to be provided, not that they have to be posted. Nothing requires posted minutes.
Really?
So, um, we, we try to do everything we can to make it easy for everybody.
Right.
Which is why we both post everything, uh, as even our drafts, as well as oftentimes the drafts will end up in the grapevine because we haven't had a chance to approve them yet.
Right.
However, the legal requirement is that they have to be available. And so that could be, talk to this person and get it. Um, that could be, okay, we can get that for you in a couple of days, uh, based on this. So there's, it's interesting, it's, it's, I wish it were, were more straightforward and more you have to post it, uh, but that's not the way that the law's written for it. But if you request it, they, especially if it's beyond the, the period of time that they have to provide them,
Right.
it will need to be gotten to you.
Okay, cause I guess I'm confused because there, you know, we vote in the money for the conservation.
Mm-hmm.
And they're a committee, it's online, minutes, agendas and minutes, and it gives all the possible committees. They're on there and there's nothing on there except for that one, and it's very, very, it's a very small agenda. But if they're having these meetings and it's online for agendas and minutes, get them off there. If they, if they don't have to put those minutes on there. I, I don't understand that, all the other committees. And then in, in grapevine, nowhere.
We don't have to put them there. We do it because we wanna be as open and transparent as possible.
And, and, right, because if, if people...
I'll give you a possible situation that may have affected this. One of the conservation commission members that, maybe it was, I think it was an alternate, but in any case, one of the previous, uh, members on the conservation commission, either normal or alternate, resigned.
Right.
And they were the ones that were doing the conservation commission portion of the website and keeping that updated. Um, so yes, they should be, hopefully, the, the best case and the way we would like to see it done is that all the minutes and agendas, the agendas ahead of time and then the minutes afterwards are provided to Dana and Russ to put, to make sure they are on the website.
Right.
But, but that's not the way that the, the law requires it.
That's frightening.
It requires that they're available. So if you come in and ask, which you're basically doing now.
Right.
Um, so, uh, Dana and Russ say they don't have them, they'll request it from the conservation commission. You should then get it to them to get to you.
Okay. I know you, you usually put in everything that's, that's around, you know, in the grapevine. And I did see somewhere concert, oh, I think it was on the, on the website, conservation committee meets, I don't know if it was June, uh, May fifth or something like that, they were having a meeting. I think it, it was something like that. It, it doesn't matter what date it was, but it did say they're having a meeting, and that's when I went to agendas and minutes and was just, they can't. Anyway, okay, so the meeting about this, is it the first or second meeting of the month?
The Battle Street property?
Yeah.
That'll be the second one, rather than the apartment head meeting.
Okay.
And so that should be, uh, June... And so that should be June eighteenth.
Okay, and the June sixth, was that for?
I wanna make sure I got, sorry, June twentieth.
It's the twentieth, I think, yeah.
June twentieth.
You have a lot of trouble in June.
I, I, I.
Dana, you're right back in?
I'm looking at the current stuff, I scrolled down, I, I went a month ahead, so yeah, it should be the, our department head meeting, our first one of the month, will be on the sixth of June, and then the twentieth of June will, should be that one.
Okay.
Unless we find out different.
Yeah.
Right?
And in theory, we have a draft of that, and if we approve the draft of that posting, then it should probably go up tomorrow or the day after.
Okay, sounds good. I'll figure out more stuff for next time, and I'll be more complete about what I wanna talk about.
Thank you.
Because you just, you bring up more stuff. For the people ahead of me, I didn't, I didn't have.
We try to make it easy.
Now, when are the agendas out?
Four.
You know, for each meeting, do, are they out, like, if the meeting's on, the selectmen is on Monday, when's the agenda out?
It's out by Friday, but we usually do it by Thursday, but we have to get the chairman to okay it.
Okay.
Because as you know with the policy, they have until Wednesday, three o'clock, go within.
Right.
So usually I do the agenda that day.
Okay.
And then I send it to Dave, and Dave approves it, then I put it up the next day.
Okay.
So usually Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, okay, I'm just curious, because, you know, if I had known what was ahead of me or behind me, then, like I said, you're, you're bringing up the policies, so we were on the same page.
It works.
You wanna say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I couldn't really hear some of your answers that you made pertaining to the driveway.
Okay.
On the salt shed. It's my understanding that maybe I've been hearing things wrong on, out there on the street, but I've been told that that road wasn't really quite wide enough going up there, and that the town was trying to buy a little more land.
Ah.
Is this true?
Sort of.
Well, sort of, really, why are you not?
Sort of, so the road itself is fine, in order to do all of the drainage the way that we feel would be the most appropriate, if using the rufton road that's there right now, that would beneficially, that, that, that would work better with an extra ten, fifteen, twenty feet worth of the property next to it. We can work it without doing that, but it does require additional rework of what's there, which has already been solid and slated, however, if we are able to use the opposite side, like we're hoping, then that won't be an issue at all.
Okay, so my point is, and I know you guys probably don't wanna hear this, because you already know the point, how much money have we spent on this engineer we've had that engineered that project?
None, we didn't have an engineer.
Yeah, because they're gonna vote it out.
It, they presented an engineer and we turned it down.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I remember that.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, wouldn't we?
I know that the town engineer engineered that roadway, along with Chris Shadeblood, that did the.
The survey.
The survey, and engineered the waterways and everything else, Barbara Mackey was on that program to buy that piece of land.
Nope.
And she told me there was three different engineers on that program.
Yes, so.
So, yes.
But, but we did not pay any, and we did not use any.
So we spent.
Also to correct you, we don't have a town engineer.
Well, I'm, who's the, who's the woman that did the Lynch Middle Bridge?
Erin.
Erin.
The, the previous engineering firm was Red Angle Engineering.
Yes, and she was up there.
The, that was, I believe, one of three or four people.
And you bought the land, and you didn't buy enough land up there, not really to do the right job.
So there was a San Chen committee, which, yes, included several people, including the ones you mentioned, their initial purpose was to find land to do this, that happened up here, and the set about and the purchase and the original stuff happened to get, towards getting that land, even before I was on the board, but then they had the land. After the land was there, and I was still on the bo, and I became on the board, one of the things that the board decided was that the, that committee should then look into how to best access and make use of that property for the new San Chen shed. They went about it by going for multiple engineers and engineering input, and the town, when they presented that to the town, the town turned down their presentations for the engineer and decided that we trusted our road agent to engineer it, and that is how that happened.
My point is, I don't blame this board, okay? Don't get me wrong here, you're not an engineer, you're not, you don't build roads, but you need to blame the people that do build roads, that do survey, the people that have bought that land. There's no reason that they didn't buy enough land to put a road up through there to start with.
So.
And, I don't wanna name names, okay? I'm not in here to name names, but this one person has made more mistakes and has cost this town a lot of money, and she should be off a lot of boards in this town, it should not be on any more committees or any more boards in this town anymore, and I believe it should be up to this board to, to see to these issues. It costs this town a lot of money.
So that's why this board tried to do what the right thing and save you the money and not get the engineer for that.
Yet, but we still don't have a road dunk running, and these people are still on committees in this town, and they're still here, they need to be gone.
I, I'm sure that you can let them know that at their meetings.
These, these people on these committees need to be gone before they start costing us more money on other jobs, that's my point. It's not a good place for you folks to be sitting up there, I understand that.
Well, we were, when, when they brought the whole engineer thing, they, you know, even, let's just even say you went with a, a plan, an engineered plan, right? They weren't gonna stamp it, they're just gonna, they weren't gonna, they weren't gonna babysit it.
I understand that.
They weren't gonna do anything, so it was pretty poorly set up.
They wanted them to be, to be all responsible for all the work.
Right, and then pay them money.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why.
I understand that.
That's why we.
No, it was probably one of the easiest decisions we've made, or I've made since I got here.
Yeah, they wanted to do the work, but one of them had taken all the responsibility for it.
That's right, but.
Anyway, we have, thank you for the comments, we, we have veered off from the affirmed policies, are there any other comments from other public before we move into our old business? All right, seeing none, that moves us on to old business policies update, what can you tell us, Dana?
This was the policy that you voted on February twenty-eighth, and took the office a long time, put two sentences in, but there you go. So basically, you just need to sign it.
You just need to sign it?
You've already blessed it.
Yeah, this is the, how we changed the last paragraph, if you wanna read it. I don't think we changed anything else, any? Do you have any other updates on the policies?
Yes, I do, we have, so far you have updated, reaffirmed, ten policies, you've, you've rescinded some policies, I think you've rescinded four policies, there are still some to review, and a couple of them I'm waiting to work out with the treasurer, so I can present it to you, the investment policy, and the, one of the policies that I had suggested that you rescind because it's a law, the delegation of deposit policy, I think we're gonna revisit that one.
Okay.
And see if it makes sense to reinstate that. There is a policy called reasonable accommodation for individuals with disabilities, and you would ask that for the personnel committee to look at that, the purchasing policy needs to be completed, the town indemnification policy, which I need to ask Michelle Derby for a copy, because I can't find a copy of that, and then the credit card policy, so I think we'll be able to, I can have those ready for you if you wanna do a work session sometime, or if you want to do them at a meeting, so I can have it to get on board. We also have several other things that are on the books that are included, policies, but a lot of it is, are things like the joint loss management policy, which after the inspection that we had, I have to rewrite that and include some more things, and that, and that has to go to the joint loss management committee to be approved, which will happen in July.
Now, is that they approve the changed version and then we approve it, or is it just them approving?
Well, I like to think you approve everything eventually, so I'm going to say that's really how it'll go, they're gonna, they're going to approve it, then I would bring it to you.
Okay.
But they do have to definitely approve it, as part of the law. Other things such as the capital improvement policy, which is more or less straightforward, but a lot of things that maybe we could take a look at, and I don't anticipate a lot of changes in any of those, and then I think, I know the trustees of trust funds, they have worked out their policy with the auditors, and also the library policies have been done with the auditors, so I think that's where we are, but you've done quite a few, with this one, we'll have the latest updated, I am working on my code book, which I keep talking about with Brinkley, and so eventually we'll have that on the website.
Awesome, I don't really think we should need a work session for it, but I don't wanna stick it on the department head one, I, well.
Would you like to, I mean, I, I think you've got a busy month of June coming up, especially if you're.
Yeah, and, well, the, the public hearing, like, that's the only thing that we have scheduled for that time, I assume a couple other things will come up.
Sure.
But my gut feeling is that it would make sense to put it on the agenda for the second meeting of next month, the same as the, the public hearing date, but if it's getting too late, we postpone it and push it to the, to a further meeting.
You wanna start it earlier than the public hearing, start your, start the meeting earlier and try to get that done before the public hearing?
We push, I mean, we, we, we could meet at the same time and just say that the public hearing is.
Later.
A half hour after our normal starting time.
Yeah, that would be, if we could get that done, then we know, yeah, that would be good for me, for me.
That's fine.
I like that idea, though.
So, we're saying June, June twentieth, and it will be your meet as a select board meeting prior to the public hearing.
Yeah, so assuming we start at six thirty, then the public, we would do that, and then the public hearing would be at, say, seven.
Okay.
Would a half hour give us enough, or do you wanna start at like six?
If not, we can continue it afterward, sooner or later.
Okay, all right.
All right, no hog.
Well, I mean, later, like a, a later meeting.
Oh, later, yeah, later at nine.
I mean, sure.
I'm just kidding.
I'll stay here as late as people want to, but most people don't wanna stay here very late.
One thirty-five o'clock comes quick.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the policies?
No.
Okay, that moves us to sale of town on properties update.
I think we've covered that quite a bit.
Yes, I know.
I did wanna talk to you about signing a purchase order, so I can have the, it's going to cost probably between, I'm estimating fifteen hundred dollars anyway to get the trash cleaned out of eight seventy-four Battle Street.
You think that's it?
I don't know, it's, you can't go into the building.
No, I mean, it's top of pitchers, yeah.
So, and I, I hope it's not more, but that's kind of what I'm thinking.
So what do we have to do, hire some special person to go in there, if it's all drugs, stuff and all that, do we have to hire somebody special?
Well, I mean, I think that certainly whoever goes in there needs to be aware that there's issues, and I don't know, I could barely get the door open, I couldn't even step in.
Oh, you're kidding, holy.
As long as they're aware of that when they're submitting a, a quote or bid, then.
Oh, all right, so we're gonna go out to bid for something like that?
Is, is it a bid, or are we requesting quotes?
Um, we can do, I think that for that amount, we can request quotes, I think it would just make sense.
Well, just to see who's interested.
I don't know of that many places that I could go to, there is one that I did read about in Sunday paper that I thought was interesting, I'd like to see what they have to say, we have used Phil Mitchell and his son for many other things.
He would certainly already know what's in there.
Yeah, yeah, right, I guess so.
Call people out of it.
Yeah.
And I don't, you know, and again, I mean, naturally we want the best, you know, bang for our buck.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to have a giant dumpster to throw stuff in.
Yes.
And those are not cheap right now.
Oh, it's, it's.
But they weren't cheap anyways, but they're, they're, yeah, that's gone now.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, I guess I, I will, maybe I'll throw it out, we'll have a, the quotes for next meeting.
Perfect.
Better than, better to hire the dumpster than have to have our road agent make twenty-five trips to the town.
Sometimes.
And so we have an update on the, I believe it was in the post-railway property that we were waiting on trees.
I spoke with Emmett about that today and, and told him that I'm waiting on him to do the trees, and, because I will be advertising that little property, and I'm happy to say, compared to eight seventy-four Battle Street, that place is pristine.
All right.
But, and I've had a lot of people that are also interested in, in that property.
Wow, that's good.
But Emmett does wanna remove.
Right.
Well, yeah, it's a big hazard.
Get rid of some trees for safety, so.
Yeah, it's really.
And I can tell you, there's a lot of black flies down there.
Oh, yes.
That was everywhere, Dana, I don't think they were just hanging out with you.
Yeah, really, we spread 'em around.
Yeah, right, we share, don't worry.
All right, any further updates on town on property?
No.
Okay, are we still waiting to hear more about the several post-railway lock, late blocks that are.
I, I owe you a list of what we might be able to sell, and frankly, I haven't had time to have that, but I do have it on my due list.
I'm sorry.
I see a, a comment wanting to be made, same.
So I just wanna ask a question.
Yes.
I'm Sherri Lott, Lake Road, when my in-laws passed, they had a vacant farmhouse that had been lived in by their parents, that had been vacant for many years, and we had to have everything in there appraised for our estate, there was stuff in that farmhouse that we thought was trash.
It wasn't.
That went to auction, that brought us thousands and thousands of dollars, now, wouldn't it behoove the town to have some sort of an appraiser walk through there before someone just goes in there and thinks stuff is trash?
Unfortunately, the answer is no, we, we thought about it and we talked about it, the end result is the town could hire an appraiser, could do that, could put stuff up at auction, but even if we go through all of that, we can't keep any more money than if we just sell the property, because anything that's beyond the taxable deed amount that we deeded the property for goes off to the, the court, to be put into trust for someone else to claim.
So something that might be worth a lot of money in that property is just gonna end up in the trash?
Well, we're, we're not. Well, we're, we're not suggesting that the, the house be cleaned out, like all of the stuff taken out of it. We're suggesting that currently with the, the pictures that we've seen, you, you can't walk in the house because there's trash bags and stuff like everywhere, this tall, throughout the whole house.
Right.
And so what we are requesting is that that be cleaned up so that people who want to be able to bid on the house can actually walk through it safely to see what they're bidding on. That's what the town is going to try to do. And we can recover that cost when it is sold, along with the deeds, the, the deeded amount. But it's not going to net the town keeping any more money. So that's why we're trying to do a minimal amount to then get the property moved to whatever it's going to be.
Which is so wrong.
It is, it's wrong. I mean, I mean that some of the stuff you honestly were going to throw away was, you know, rare. Which is a shame if some of it is.
Well, unfortunately, another thing unfortunately is like antiques right now are not.
What she's talking about, just some piece of paper, maybe worth a thousand dollars.
Historic.
99% of the people that's going to go in that building is going to pick it up, throwing it down.
Yeah, that, that was just, that was from a, a personal experience.
That house is old enough where it may be a piece of paper there that is worth.
And, and one of the.
Dorothy Zambis' house was the same thing. Aaron and I got papers out of that house. Dorothy Zambis' house, it was worth cuckoo money. Because it's got some signatures on it.
Which do you, which taking the time to do that, it, that, that does cost money too.
I understand that.
You know what I mean, your time is worth money going through and picking out, you know, and I don't.
And I would hire, I would, just me personally, I would hire somebody to do that immediately if the town could keep any of the money that it made, but the town can't.
I understand that, you would rather off just sell it just for your cents.
So, so what we have asked and there was interest, and I don't know whether it will be followed through on or not, is that once we have the place clean enough to be walked through, the historic society had mentioned that they had interest in walking through just to see if there was anything that they should document that was of historic value to know that it's in the town, et cetera. That's not a, they can take it, that's not a, the town selling it to them, but to go through it and at least document that this part of history is here if there is something that's, that's actually historically valuable.
That's just my, my opinion.
Thank you.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't just let anybody run through there and don't stop.
But you're right, because what a lot of people like you, a lot of people would not think, young people especially, wouldn't think anything about history.
A friend asked me once, he said, "Piece of glass, what did you do with that? You owned it." I said, "Throw it in the dump?" He said, "I just sold it for $20,000."
Yeah, exactly, you got to know what you're talking about.
This ugly, this puke green piece of glass. This little vase about this big. I bought that in the ad sale for five bucks. He said, "I just sold it for $20,000."
See, if you know what people, that's true.
That's what's going to happen in that house.
You have to know your stuff.
Yeah, well, and know what's hot at the time.
Somebody thinks it's a dump and somebody knows it's rare and worth.
That's what, that's all I'm getting at, just because it's sitting in a bag somewhere.
I mean, you know what would've been the coolest thing is if we, everybody had tons of money.
In that old house.
Wouldn't it have been nice to, to, to take it, preserve it, have it be part of the town right across from the safety building? But who, you know, that would be what I would personally would love to do.
I know David Fish is dead and it's going to his estate and the state's going to the state.
Right.
Yep.
Where the money's going.
Right. But, oh well, it's unfortunate, actually.
Yeah, it's, it's a very unfortunate situation.
Historic building.
But I'll let you guys be on with it tonight. You don't want me here all night.
No, please.
Alright. That brings us to new business, code enforcement.
I received a couple anonymous complaints. I have put them in there and I wanted to know if the board wanted to look into them. I have looked on file and didn't see any driveway permits for those lots. And I went and checked in the property files. However, some of them are houses, one of them's a house that was built in 1976. But the complaint is, is there are multiple new driveways. So I don't know if you wanted me to have some of it, like maybe Tom and Paul and Emmett could take a look to see if they found it. But based on what I can find in the office, I'm not sure either way.
Thank you, Autumn.
See you later. Have a good night.
Tommy, you too.
So based on that, my suggestion would be that we ask our code inspector to go see if there are new driveways that, and probably call to, because he has more of the historic knowledge of it, whether it was there or not for many of these. So I personally would suggest that we ask the two of them to go find out if it's actually a new driveway. And if it is, then to go through the appropriate process. If it's not a new driveway, well, then someone's just complaining.
I agree. I think everybody's got a policy, they go, everybody's got to live with it. So what's good for one is good for everybody.
With these anonymous complaints. And, and, and they have the right to do that, that's not.
You just don't want it to cost the town a lot of money in that sense, right?
But I think that, you know, sometimes you don't know if it's all just is something behind it that we don't know, is what I'm saying.
Yep.
Kind of like what was happening really to that lady.
But on the other hand, you can't let them get away with stuff because it'll just, it's just like.
Yep.
Right, it's like a thing that just keeps growing and growing. And if, well, I, he got away, I'm getting away, and then it's a disaster area.
And that's why we have to come to you, because many times, unfortunately, code enforcement costs money.
Well, I, at this point, we are still in the, like, if we were sending, if, if we were getting this kind of thing all the time, then I would suggest that we think about a different process. But we purposely put into our fees to be able to reasonably handle a few enforcement complaints like this for sending out our inspector. So that's what I think we should do. If this becomes a plague of code enforcement complaints in the future, then I think we should revisit that, but until then.
Correct.
I do too.
I wasn't trying to suggest that you had a plague going on.
Oh, no. Because we've only seen a couple, which is good.
And he, he just said if there becomes one.
Yes.
And I'm going to say something, I can't, I just never mind. We don't want a COVID alert or something.
Alright. So that moves us on to the last of the new business, intent to cut.
So one of those pretty, pretty straightforward, it was from last year. And that was the one on Whitkins Road, the coursers. That was one that was approved last year but didn't get cut, so they're resubmitting for this year. Because he said that the land was too muddy, they couldn't do it. So they sent, submitted a no cut and then resubmitted the exact same intent to cut. And they're hoping to get it done this year. And the other one, there is something with that one. The road agent has suggested that since it's on one of our classics roads, that the logger is going to be using it to traverse over, that we have them sign an agreement that basically states that you're going to return that road in like or better condition, because it's one of our emergency lanes. So I've asked Roy to go out, Roy Vanjoy, since he lives right next to the road.
Well, that's the road, okay.
Yeah, so he's going to take some pictures of the condition currently and then I'm going to draft up a letter and have them sign it. So I didn't know if you wanted to wait until after we had that other agreement signed or just sign this right now.
Well, Roy will do a good job, I know that.
Well, and that's kind of a, that's kind of a given, isn't it, the way the rule is read? That, you know, on a class six road, that whoever does use it needs to leave it. I mean, granted, do I think, do I think an agreement's a great idea, yeah? But I don't think it should hold up. Because you, if we sign this, let's say we sign this tonight and you ask them to sign, and we can put a contingent on them signing that agreement.
Right, and then there are only certain ways you can deny somebody from, an intent to cut.
No, but I, I, I'm.
However, we can deny them the use of the classics road until they sign the agreement.
Yeah, so then we would sign that tonight.
Right. I just wanted to bring that up and make sure that's something the board still wanted me to pursue and have done.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
I don't see your signature.
Well, I will sign it.
But I'm going to have to wait for the pictures and if I don't get them soon, I'll go out and take pictures myself. Roy said he'd work on it, so. And he also was asking if maybe one of the members of the select board would want to go and walk the road and go play and see what the condition was like for Floyd. That was his suggestion.
It's not, Emmett, Emmett wouldn't want to do that?
The southern lady needs to sign.
I think Emmett would be doing that already, because it's an emergency lane.
Well, yeah, so I, I don't think.
This is just what Roy suggested, that maybe one of the select board member walks in as well.
I guess all I'm seeing is he's, he's got the, the knowledge and the criteria of, right. There's a lot of, so I, I say, as long as Emmett's walked in and you've got pictures, which is great.
Wait on the pictures, yeah, we just asked for it.
Even, sure.
As you go along further there, you really need your boots, because I walked out there last year.
Which is one of the reasons why I don't have pictures yet.
You have been, I've been, it's wet.
Especially, it's going to be wet tomorrow.
Oh, yes, I'm sure.
And that amount of wet, I would not be looking forward to the black flies.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even be looking forward to getting my car stuck out there either.
Yeah, right.
Not a fun process.
But that was our, that was the reasoning I was told, and I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I, I like the agreement and the documenting of it.
Very much.
I can't see, I can't understand how it would possibly be returned worse because they would have trouble getting the equipment through it if it were worse.
Or removing the product, I suppose.
But, you know, that's fine.
It's always a great surprise.
Yeah, good thing, come on Dave.
I know people can do all kinds of things.
All sorts of creative things.
Yes, the agreement is absolutely the appropriate way to do it. Alright, that moves us to correspondence.
I wanted to start with, have you looked at what I've come up with for the notice of the public hearing? And after tonight, I don't know whether you, whether you think that's, my assistant suggested that it was too descriptive. And maybe you might want to.
I will explain my thoughts. Because we are going to bring up all the options and I think the public should have the opinion to put their options forward, not just the options we're putting in front of them.
Oh, I see.
So you, you want the big statement?
I want the big statement.
Okay, as a writer, I think you're correct. More information, they have less questions we have to answer.
So you, you were saying that you thought it should be more brief?
Oh, I thought.
No, I thought, I wrote it like that.
Oh, okay.
And you think it should be more.
I think it should be more briefs because it leaves more opportunity for the public to make their comments of what their wishes are. That was my reasoning.
Oh, okay, alright. Well, I like to see more information.
We're going to, we're going to look into though the fact that maybe we don't even.
Well, we have to, yeah, exactly.
We might not even.
Throw it under the bus.
We have to talk with the attorney, you know. I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, because I thought it was a good suggestion, that's why I brought it up.
If not, you would just lock it up.
But, and I know, I know that I'm wordy, because I'm used to explaining things in detail.
I would just suggest change the last sentence. Because you're, we're telling them what it is, what's there, that it is grandfathered and eligible for subdivision. And then the last sentence, rather than specifics this or this, I would just say this meeting is to gather input on how the town would like the property to be handled.
I agree with that.
Okay, alright.
Because I really don't want to put people with a this or this option because then they're going to dispute between the two options. And that means we're not going to get people to voice maybe an idea we didn't think about.
And I would suggest that we approve this for posting contingent upon being told we can actually do any of it. Because if we can't, then it's just.
Hey, where was that guy before?
If you can't, then it just goes up as is.
Well, maybe we could take that out until we know, because if we don't know, we could still post it tomorrow without that included in it.
Well, I'll, I think if.
There isn't really much to do if we're not allowed to. Because he said we, if that, what that gentleman said is correct, that we both can't subdivide it and can't put an easement on it because both of those are considered providing value for the town above and beyond, et cetera, then, then there's no point in having the hearing.
I had this, I, I wanted to have it ready in time because there's a local newspaper that I'm trying to have a go into.
Oh, isn't that nice?
Yeah.
I know, I've been there after a while.
My, my suggestion is contact M H M A tomorrow and if they don't provide anything definitive, which they probably won't, then contact our legal.
I would do that.
And if he says that we can't, yeah, you can't do it, then I wouldn't bother with this.
It's a moot point.
I would think that, well, he should be able to give you an answer fairly quickly because now that we're talking about it, I'm sure this has happened in other towns and, I'm sure there's, there probably is case law in the present, so it's probably, I wouldn't think it was like one of those surprise things, we just didn't know it.
So.
Okay.
Do we want to suggest that if the, if this is possible, you post the public hearing? If it is not possible, you post bidding?
Oh, sorry, I have to show.
I already said there was going to be a public hearing to a lot of people and there is still the option of keeping the property for the town.
Fair.
So that is something.
Oh, okay, so maybe we just.
Hold it anyway, because I would clearly say that we've announced several times that we're going to do it and then not do it and then post it. I think some people might get over that.
Yeah, you're right.
That's a fair point.
And they might think that we were not showing our hand. And we do not want that, please.
And we can always tell them, if you have other ideas, please let us know, but the ones that we had, we can't do, so. Then it would be a really short public hearing.
Yeah, that's right, correct.
So, okay, I'm fine with that. I guess if we know that we can't do it, then we just remove the, you know, the extra sentence or whatever that mentions it.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Alright, do we have any other correspondence?
I do, I do. Received a letter from our utility appraiser. He received an abatement request from Eversource. It's the annual Eversource abatement request. And he is recommending that the abatement be denied. And I would agree with his, I always like to say no to abatements.
Well.
Especially if you say Eversource.
Well, we allow to say that, I like.
Well, they may care, man. Do they ever go in there for reducing their rates? No, it's.
No, 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 don't worry, oh, hey, I thought of that.
So, I mean, we can write a letter to Eversource telling them this. Or if they don't hear from us, they know it's been denied. But I always think it's better to write a letter.
Write a letter, yeah, mine too.
So I would do that. Today I re.
Should we move that we deny as per our utility appraiser?
Why not?
Alright, I would move that we deny the abatement requested by Eversource as per the recommendation from our utility appraiser.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Today, and I think you received this day from Olive Wood.
Oh, yes.
It was a, a letter of the quarterly project report. Basically, it doesn't look like anything's changed. Is there something?
I didn't compare it to the previous one, but they did mention the particular items that they are waiting for, which is the new information. The, there are a couple things that they've, so they've been doing lots of studies, whether it's the wetland wildlife, et cetera, that they have been conducting and or.
This is the solar, right?
Yes, and or previously conducted. And we have not yet, as a town or the solar subcommittee, seen any further suggested engineering plans. And unfortunately for them and for us, there are a couple outside entities that are not Olive Wood that they have to wait for studies to be done before they can move forward with the regulatory process and or applications.
Everybody's got their hand in the pie.
And, and they're still waiting on that. So.
And they're not, the other companies aren't in any big rush, I'm sure. So, well, they're very busy.
Generally not. They're, they're usually rather busy on these. And so part of it would be, for example, interconnect and how to get there. Like all of the agreement with the, the power. interconnect and how to get there, like, all of the agreement with the, the power company.
Yeah.
Like, that would be one portion of that. And not to throw anybody under the bus, because no one specific, or not even any single entity is the one to be thrown under, but you're gonna have at least the utility, PUC, now probably the new energy, I don't remember what the full name of it is that they formed for this state.
Oh, yeah, right.
I think it's Department of Energy. Like, all of these people are involved with that, as is ISO New England, who's the whole entire region, all of them have to collaborate on creating that, so you can imagine why with all of the other things happening, that might get delayed.
Yeah, I could see that easily, yeah.
And so there are a couple pieces.
There's a lot of baby formula, for God's sakes, you know.
So, so there's a couple pieces like that, that they can't really move forward and say, this is what our engineering plan is, and how we're, you know, and how we're submitting for regulatory approval, because they, they need that information first.
Yeah, yeah, well, you can't blame them.
So, that's the slightly expanded version of, of what that says. Do we have any other correspondence, or any other questions on that, actually?
Nope.
I went this morning to Merrimack County, they have started what they call their county navigator program, which refers to welfare, and it's an interesting program, and I think, you know, welfare, the way it works is basically, all, all that I can do for someone is to put out a fire, I can't solve their problem. And many times, you'd like to take the time and say, you know, do you know how to run a budget? Or, you know.
Common sense thing.
You've, you've, you've gotta, you've gotta, you know, take responsibility for, for actions and things, and I'm not criticizing anybody, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's kind of, my, my electric bill's being, you know, my lights are being shut off, or I'm being thrown out of my house, or, you know, we have to do something.
Yeah.
But this program, I'm encouraged, and the cap agency I've worked with a lot, because a lot of people are referred open to them, and they have been great, but this is, they have several people at the county level now that are working on this, and they all, and I think in some cases, and I'm not criticizing, but it's a little polyannous to me sometimes, because it's, they're gonna really work closely with people, and I know the people they're gonna work with, that sometimes it's just not gonna work. But, on the other hand, they shouldn't listen to no grubs like me and just, you know, try to do their best. And sometimes people might be successful. Anyway, I think it's a, it's a very good thing for the town, because I don't have the time for like, things like that, I don't have the funds for things like that, we don't have, we don't have the traffic that other people have, fortunately. I was very surprised when the woman from Boscombe told me today that they had someone in a hotel for months, and it's been eighteen thousand dollars for them to stay there.
Real lucky.
And so, it's like, you know, and they also have, and this is, I, I know this firsthand, but they have a fund at the county, that if you send someone to a hotel and they trash the place, they give a fund that will help pay for it.
Can you imagine, send someone, and then they trash the place?
Oh, they haven't made an over.
What is?
Yeah, they went, suddenly they had.
What is wrong with these people?
You know, they had the, it was just the woman and her child, and then all of a sudden, there was a boyfriend involved.
Oh, shit. It doesn't really surprise you.
It was sad, it was, it was sad, you know, and they're owing you quite a bit of money, but, anyway, the point is just trying to.
Is that something that they're just saying that is available, that we should make use of, or is it something we need to join or budget for, like?
No, as far as the hitting their fund for repairs and maintenance.
Well, I'm, I'm just, because you're mentioning the whole program as being able to help people, et cetera, is that something that we need to join, or is it just something?
Well, we're Merrimack County, that's.
Yeah, Merrimack.
Okay, so, so it's now available to us?
Yes.
Perfect.
And, and they have.
That's really good.
I thought they had a very good presentation there, the, is it county administrator, I guess that's his, that's his title, I think he's very forward-thinking, and Rick is really trying to get a hold of some of these problems, and of course, we're not having the problems like Congress and, or, or anything.
Yeah, you got that, well, thank God, little miracles.
I don't really, it's been a little quiet as far as that goes lately, it's good.
Good, yeah, it's not bragging.
I know, I'll be very quiet, so, anyway, why don't you know that, I thought that was a well worthwhile going today, plus I have a face that, you know, it's kinda hard not to know much against you. And I met Peter Flynn, who knows you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, dear.
With, for example, that comment about the Boscombe and, and their large bill, should, I don't think we need to change our budget, because we're not expecting a lot of that sort of thing, but does it, it sounds like it makes, it would make sense for us to continue to build up the trust fund for the in-case side of welfare.
I think one thing with this program, and I think that, do I think we budget enough for welfare, probably not, and it doesn't matter what we budget, because if we're responsible, we have to come up with the money somehow. But I think what this program does, and what the point is, if you have someone who has a terrible housing issue, and of course, housing is terrible for everybody right now, rather than having a town have to be burdened to put someone up in a hotel, the county has resources to help you with, you know, placing people in different.
And that's nice, that's.
And they know all the, they know all the, I mean, there's a ton of paperwork that you'd have to fill out to, to be eligible to have, I don't know, rent based, what you can afford to pay, or something like that, and so I think that's where, and I'm not criticizing Boscombe, I didn't mean that.
Oh, no, 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 no. Well, I'm just saying, based on the amount, is it something?
It's an enormous responsibility that I think is.
And they have a lot of rental units too, and stuff like that, that's.
A little bit different.
Yeah, it's the housing is what it is.
There's a, there's a lot more.
Lot of rentals and.
Lot of rentals, that makes a big difference then.
It, but with this program, it'll really help them.
Okay.
And I've had people come in, I just had one the other day, who is looking for, you know, I need a place to live, and I did look at a few, I did call the cap, gave a few suggestions, but I wish I had this, because I would've just filled out this referral form, instead of referring it to the county, and, and they've got professionals that are on staff that will help us.
So, was that somebody that lived in Webster, or just somebody that was traveling through and wanted to live in Webster?
No, they.
They lived there currently?
She did live there?
Yeah, she did, yeah.
Yeah.
No, she lived here. And, and she was, you know, I, I felt, you know, I wanted to help her.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, but they also have programs, I mean, a resident who really needed some help as far as even filling out paperwork, maybe it wasn't so much, or trying to figure, you know, or people that, and I'm, I'm one of them, you know, put it going on the computer and trying to fill out something, and.
Gee, that sounds like me, you know, like, yeah, my problem.
Well, it, it sounds like a good program, and I'm glad that we now have it available to us. Do we have any other correspondence?
No.
All right, that moves us to public comment, of which all of our public has now left and commented beforehand, which is fine, we generally try to encourage that, and so that moves us to motions and approvals. Have you both been able to see the draft minutes that we have?
I sure did.
Yes.
Looks good to me.
All right.
Well, I wasn't there, so I probably shouldn't say, okay.
You can check the board.
I thought you were.
Well, I was at the, yeah, the non-public, but on the eighteenth, but I did make, made second.
All right, so I'll, I'll do them separate, I would move that we approve the May second minutes as written, unless you have any changes?
Nope, I second that.
And, rather than all in favor, I'll do the roll call myself, yes?
Marla?
Yes.
Oh, abstain.
All right. And then that moves us to the non-public sessions one and two from four eighteen, so I'd move that we approve the draft meeting minutes from four eighteen, non-public session one and two as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that moves us to motions of for trustees.
We have some this time.
We do.
We had a price for a little while here.
I know, we were taking another car, I'm afraid.
What was that?
Oh. There you go.
Makes it.
Oh, yep, yep.
Make sure to sign the, the second page of motions.
Is it fifty-two hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I would move to request trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of three thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents to pay invoice two three one four six two, in the amount of two thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, for invoice two three one five two five, and, wait a second, no, that's, we're missing a number. Let me get this correct here. We've got one invoice, there are two, okay. Okay, that's correct. Oh, I see, because it's the total. That makes sense.
Yes.
I have moved to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of three thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents to pay invoices two three one four six two, in the amount of two thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, and two three one five two five, in the amount of six hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, payable to Bergeron Protective Clothing for bunker gear for the fire department. These funds to come from the Fire Department Bunker Gear Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars to New Boston Equipment Rentals LLC for rent of an over-the-rail mower. These funds to come from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
The New Boston bill.
Is a little late.
Is late.
Yeah, I saw that.
And it's, that's not Emmett's fault, but he's been able to.
That happens sometimes.
You know.
And how kind we are to still pay it.
I suppose that would be good until we need another one again.
Right, we didn't have to sign it.
You don't have to sign it, no.
Um, yeah, and then, signing of documents.
Yes, those you have to sign and sign them.
Is there anything other than usual manifests and payroll?
Well, I do have, you did sign at your last meeting a tax collector's warrant, and guess what? The assessors weren't done, and so I had to do another one. So, I, this is for Karen King, so that she can send taxes. So, you would send that, sign that. Last time, you wrote it on an Arthur bill, and this is just for Wendy's manifest, if you could sign that.
Oh, that's the one we have.
That's, you've already, that last meeting. And then this is the manifest for tonight, which includes a school.
Yes, that's, makes it a little bit.
Yeah, I don't think we have to pay the school in June, but, which is a good thing, because we don't have money enough, we have cash flow.
Well, I'm sure we're not the only town at this time of year, right, exactly, exactly.
Right.
So, pay your taxes.
I know, you know.
Pay your taxes so we don't default, charge you more taxes.
Right, but you know, right, when you think about that kind of money, and that you're depending on everybody to.
Yep.
And their money, and you're like, woo.
Exactly.
That's why we try to keep the unsigned fund at least a percentage.
That's right, I know, such a good dude.
My theory is, if you don't pay your taxes, you're asking everyone else in town to pay them, unfortunately.
I should move to a signature like yours, it's much easier.
Man.
It doesn't, it doesn't look as messy either.
No. I think it's as lo, as lovable to us, too.
Maybe more.
That's all I have for that.
All right, is there anything else further that either of you wanna discuss, or, okay?
I would like to request a non-public under ninety-one A three two section A personnel.
All right, I'll move that we enter non-public under personnel at eight fifty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so, have a nice day, we will immediately adjourn once that session is complete, so there will be no further public.